Okay, let's welcome Mr. Pete Kimble in. Pete, I'm gonna let you tell, I've tried to tell you a story a million times and I tell it and then I say, well, I'm just gonna let Pete tell it.
There you go, there you go.
So, thank you for being here and real excited to have you and the floors, and we're missing, the mayor's here, he'll be here somewhere. And Marcus McIntyre is, he works downtown, so you can only imagine it's pretty tough to get here.
Probably challenged a little bit, yeah.
But if you would, let's get started.
Fantastic. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us out tonight to share our story with you guys and let you hear what we're up to. My name is Pete Kimble. My wife, Sherri, and I are the creators of Garden Oak Holiday Lights. So, what is Garden Oak Holiday Lights? It's basically a Christmas light display, at least that's the way we first thought it was gonna be. And that, what makes it a little different than any other traditional Christmas light display is that our lights are synchronized to Christmas music, or popular music at the time. So people drive up in their car, tune in their radio station to a specific radio station, and they get to hear the music that we're transmitting from our home. And most of our seasonal shows are about 20 minutes in length and we can host about 12 cars at a time. We are 100% free, that we don't ask anything from the public when they come up to see the display. The first year that we had it, we didn't know if anybody was gonna come and visit our display. We did it for us to begin with, and that we found out that word of mouth is a very powerful tool, that people enjoyed it, and the message started being spread. So, that first year, we decided that if any donations were to be donated to us, that it would all go to cancer research. There's a story behind that, but I won't go into it right now. 100% of our organization is volunteer-based. None of the money that we collect goes to us. It all goes to the cancer research. All of the lights, the equipment to put into it, the yellow safety vest that we have all of our volunteers wear, the candy canes that we hand out to every car, that's all out of my wife and I's pocket. That's our gift back to the community here. So, 2010 is when we first started with the technology, trying to figure out what to do with it. It's a little different because we are able to control each individual light bulb on our display and make it one of 16 million colors up to 44 times per second. So, you come to our house, you see the display, and the lights sweep across the display, swirl up and down, lots of colors, everything's into the beat of the music. It's different. Everybody enjoys it. So, 2012 was our first year. We were honored with having the Neighborhood House of the Season Award. We had about 200 cars, raised a little less than $600, which if we just had $1, or just a thank you was all that, you know, would've been great, in that we were rewarded with $600 to go to cancer research. 2013, almost 500 cars, over $1,200 raised. 2014, almost 1,000 cars, just under $3,000 raised. There's a trend here that keeps on going, it keeps on growing. 2015, we were the Charlotte Observer's Must See House of the Season. And if you don't know what that is, that is the front page of their paper saying, "You gotta see this display." We had no idea. And that we were invited to be on ABC's Great Christmas Light Fight that year. We turned them down. There's a reason behind that. It has to do with the popularity of your display after you're on their show. We already have a problem with popularity. We didn't need to make it worse. So, 2015, almost 5,000 people, just under $4,000 raised. 2016, Charlotte Observer had a contest. Submit your favorite Christmas light displays that are free in the area. We had no idea that this was going on, and all of a sudden, somebody drove up that night and said, "Hey, congratulations, you guys are number two behind McAdenville." Wow, no idea. So, that year, just under, or just over $6,000 raised. 2017, we were the lead story for the National Foundation for Cancer Research annual report. National Foundation for Cancer Research is who we donate our donations to. 20, let's see, almost $7,500 that year. This year, we formed as a nonprofit charity. We are officially a 501(c)(3). Because of Mother Nature raining every weekend between Thanksgiving and Christmas this year, we had a little bit of a drop-off. Almost $6,000 raised, but we had lots of spirit in every one of those cars that came out to see it. We have a picture of a bunch of girls sitting in a convertible with an umbrella up, singing at the top of their lungs to the Christmas songs. So, nothing was gonna stop the people. So, safety is a concern, and I mentioned to you that popularity is a problem that we have. And so, back, our first year, we actually coordinated with Union County Sheriff. Captain Kobel was my contact at the time, and he went over our plan of how to handle traffic. He approved us. We've actually had a police officer with Charlotte Mecklenburg come out and volunteer with us to help with traffic on some of our busier nights. Love the way we do things. We communicate to our neighbors early in the season before we start the show, give them some safety tips. We have a way of communicating to each other so that their driveways stay open and we get them to their house immediately, beyond everybody else. Traffic will back up and sometimes we'll have people waiting an hour, hour and a half to get up to the house. And that we have to coordinate that with the neighbors to make sure that they stay happy. This past season, we had up to 11 volunteers helping on nights, all of which are doing it out of generosity of their heart, that they loved what we're doing. We have an emergency plan that we did activate in 2016, that there was a brush fire at the end of our street. Baker's Fire Department needed to come through, and they weren't sure if they were going to, if they knew our display, they know the traffic that we generated. Everything was halted, no traffic was moving except for them. They got through, they got back out, and afterwards, the engineer of the fire department came by and congratulated us that they couldn't expect a better situation, that they were appreciative of it. So, our plan worked. We have a new concept, that we have a problem with traffic. It's just a matter of time before the neighbors come after me with pitchforks and torches. And we want to move the display out of our neighborhood, Brandon Oaks. It's been great, it's worked well, it got things going, which we never expected it to happen, but we have momentum now, and we wanna take that momentum and keep on going. It's a good thing that we're doing. So, we wanna build a Christmas town square. Basically, an elaborate Hollywood set, 13 storefronts with display windows. These display windows will have Christmas themes inside, much like an old-time department store's display window used to be. Santa's Workshop is a centerpiece. Santa's Workshop is the tallest feature of the whole thing. It's about 50 foot tall, about 100 foot wide. The total area inside of this structure is about 178 feet by 100 feet. So, the idea is that people would come in, mingle around, looking in the display windows, and on the hour, half-hour, we would start our 20-minute seasonal presentation, and they can stay as long as they want. We wanna continue making it a free display for everybody that comes in. We do not wanna charge an admittance fee to the, to the whole thing. All of the structures are off limits to public. That's a question that I get, well, how are we gonna control people going in and out? Nope. It's off limits, they're just walking around, looking in the display windows. Two entrances, one exit, and that this is a concept that was brought over from one of our other volunteers. He works for a larger construction company, working on the airport expansion right now. That you'll notice that there's Conex boxes or C containers, that this is the same concept we will use for people coming in and out of our structure. That's a safety feature, that if something did catch on fire, have an issue, those metal containers will allow people to get in and out without any problems. And then, there'll be one larger gated entrance or exit for emergency purposes, but also to get large vehicles in and out, fire trucks or dump trucks or people lifts, whatever we need to get in there. The location, we've been gracious enough, last year, we raised our hand and said, "Hey, do we have any volunteers out there for people that can help us with land?" You know, if we don't have someplace to move this to, we might as well not even get started. And to our surprise, Wise Acres Organic Farm, located technically outside of Indian Trail, but still has an Indian Trail mailing address, 38 acres of land, they graciously said, "Yeah, we like what you guys are doing, love your concept, you are thinking like we are, let's join up and do this together." So, they're just off of Poplin Road across from Montero. David's familiar with that subdivision, I believe. Little corner of their property here, we've superimposed on the screen now a scaled model of what it would look like. We're gonna squeeze it right into the middle of the woods there. We have some distances between the neighbors. This was a slide that we used for Union County Planning Department to show them how close we were to the other neighbors around. And that in the end, Union County Planning has approved us zoning-wise to move forward, that we have their recommendation to continue. People are always concerned about, well, you have a problem with people coming now. Our limit is 12 cars to be able to see the display at one time, even though we'll have many more lined up waiting. So, with this new venue, Wise Acres has about 200 parking spaces on property, and they have an agreement with Poplin Elementary just behind them with another 350 spaces. So, altogether, our new concept will be park and walk inside to see the new display. I think this is gonna hold us for a while. I don't think we're gonna have any problems. And because our show is not a four-hour show or three-hour show, it's 20 minutes with a 10-minute intermission where people can walk around, we think people will turn over pretty decently. So, a few may hang around and stay for a second show, but it should be something that moves, moves well. Trails for entering and exit of the display itself. Enter on one side, exit on the other, seems pretty straightforward. They'll have a nice path to walk through, through the woods at night. So, we will have actually multiple sessions throughout the year. We'll operate about 132 hours throughout the entire calendar year, only 132 hours. Christmas is our longest season, which is gonna go between Thanksgiving and the weekend after Christmas. That is free admission to the public, our tradition, but we have to cover operational costs, insurance, electricity, gotta make the lights flash somehow, insurance, you know, lease for the land, all those things to make things function. So, the summer, around July 4th, we'll do a patriotic display where families can come out, bring their picnic blankets and some snacks, and they can watch the lights underneath the stars. Halloween, we'll do something similar, maybe the weekend before, weekend after, or depending on when it falls, maybe both. And those will be paid events that the public can come out and enjoy the lights with. We'll also do a behind-the-scenes tour, that the lighting hobby is a growing one, and that many people are fascinated to know how things work. If they want to know how the magic trick works and know all the secrets, we will be glad to let that information out. We currently help about 12 other individuals get into this hobby, and there's no reason to hide it. And matter of fact, it could be somebody that I could, in the future, ask for advice on how to do something. You never know how those things can switch around, and you can become the student and they become the teacher. Projected numbers, so we use 2017's numbers to begin with, and then statistically, we rolled those forward. 2020, we're looking at just under 5,000 cars, just over 15,000 people. We're estimating about 379 people per hour, and the per-hour thing is an important part, that we don't want this thing crowded with people. We want it to move along and that people come in and out, so that there's plenty of room, people aren't overwhelmed with the whole experience inside, in that we don't want everybody collecting up against the display windows constantly. By, we get out to 2020, or sorry, 2022, we're looking at just over 700 people an hour, almost 10,000 cars. These are just projected numbers, but they follow a consistent formula, I'm told. So, we're hoping that these numbers hold true. If not, maybe even a little stronger, that maybe it becomes more popular than we think. Halloween, summer events, we're looking at around 400 people a night when we do have those events themselves. So, the interior space, people said, "Well, if you're looking at that many people per hour, how many people can you hold?" So, the only relationship that we can go with is a party venue, that if you have a stand-up cocktail hour for the estimated 17,800 square foot that we have inside, what is allowed for that type of situation? And it comes to about 2,500 people could be allowed in there. We don't want 2,500 people in there. We like the idea of keeping it 800 people or less per hour. That's our, that's our favorite. We can get to know people that way, maybe a little bit. We still want to keep things volunteer-based, no compensation from anybody, so that means that we're gonna need volunteers to help with traffic, direct people, and to perform emergency patrols around the venue, make sure everything is intact, that nobody's vandalizing everything, and if people are finding their ways back to their cars, we won't have any problems. We want to get the display up and running by 2020. So, people will say, "Well, you got rest of 2019 and you got 2020 to go." Yeah, we're estimating that's gonna take somewhere between 10 and 12 months to actually build the structure. We're not a company, we're not a corporation. We are trying to fund this through grassroots efforts, and that part of it will be done through commercial contractors to do some of the building, and then the rest will be volunteer work. And so, coordinating those volunteers and getting them out on weekends, or when they can, that's gonna take up some time. Then, we're gonna need about six months to do the lights themselves. The lights are not something that are sold in the United States, that they actually come out of Asia, and we buy them in their raw form so that they're less expensive. Then, we have to take those lights and put them into some type of frame or element that then looks like something for Christmas. So, outlining around the window has to be in some type of structure so that it can keep the lights in shape. And then, we have to hide all those wires, everything that looks nice and neat. That takes time. So, six months is what we're planning on doing that. That will be a record if we get it done in that time, but with enough people, I'm sure we can. This is a benefit to Indian Trail, that if anybody asks, "Where are you located?", you know, of course, we're gonna say Wise Acres over an Indian Trail. It's gonna be something, that we have no doubt that with the amount of interest that we've had in our current display, and we've really kept it a secret 'cause we don't want to be overwhelmed with the traffic, we're gonna now let, you know, people know who we are, where we are, and when we're having this event. We'll be proudly saying that we're an Indian Trail. It will again be a free activity, when around the Christmas time, there are not many free events that people can go to. And you'd be surprised how many people come out to our display because it is a free event. Parents that can't afford to do things with their children, they come out to our event because they know it's free and they know their kids will enjoy it. And we're a family-oriented event. We're not trying to commercialize this experience at all. Matter of fact, with sponsors that are in the display, we'll be glad to show their logo or company name at the beginning of the show, but we don't want it to commercialize in signs all over the place saying that, you know, "This is XYZ's company sponsor event" or something. We wanna keep it a family-oriented, you know, traditional display. You guys could help us. You could, you could really help us. We're in the middle of fundraising. We're a little behind. We got backed up a little bit with the Union County Planning Department, took a little longer than we expected, and it dropped us right into the Christmas season for 2018. And so, we had to get the lights up and running and keep the show running for 2018. So, we're really just now starting our fundraising. So, we've lost basically six months of time. So, we're looking for sponsorships of either monetary or material donations from companies and organizations. Doesn't have to be an Indian Trail, can be in the area. We have a way to make sure that they're recognized for their generosity. You guys, being the Indian Trail Town Council, that if you guys would like, you could share our link to our donation site, so that maybe we can get some word out that way. I'm sure that people will respect your opinions of things. We're willing to work with other organizations to help raise the funds, to partner with them, if they would, you know, be another way of us bringing in other volunteers into our event during December months when things are really challenged for people to get volunteers to come out to work with us. We also gonna need volunteers once the construction begins, so working with those other groups could also be another means of bringing in volunteers. We'd love to say that Indian Trail Town Council that supports us, and that you guys love what we're doing in the area and you wanted to help us get the word out, and that we can say that, you know, we're backed by you guys. And then, if the Indian Trail would like to contribute directly, you know, yourselves, we'd even love that even more. But we know it's gonna be a group effort to get this to work, that one person most likely is not gonna come forward and donate all of the money to build this new venue. We're looking for somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 altogether. $450,000 to build the venue itself, and people scratch their heads and say, "How can you build that for $450,000?" But remember, it is a Hollywood set, basically. So, there's not the same finish and, you know, electrical requirements, that type of things that you have to have for a full finished building, such as this beautiful one that we're in right now. It's just a Hollywood set that looks good from the outside. The Christmas lights, you know, take up the remaining budget there, about $150,000. We're gonna try to squeeze in, well, I should say that we have about 65,000 lights now on our current display, new display about 1.6 million. So, we're, we're definitely going to try to get things up and running in a bright way. If you'd like to personally donate, donate.goholidaylights.com is our website to go to to make your personal pledge. Jerry Lichens and Mark Vartanian are two of our volunteers that helped me throughout the years to get this display up and running, and they have volunteered to also continue working forward with me. I couldn't do it without them or my wife. Like I said, it's a group effort to get this whole thing pulled off. So, if there's any questions that you guys have, I'll be glad to answer them. Great, no.
I'll say something, just real quick, I don't know how much time we've got. Do you know how many?
You got nine minutes.
I've got plenty of time, man. I just happened to stumble across, I've been several years, mainly because my wife loves to go so much, and I enjoy it, and it's not very far to travel, and we go over, and this year, we waited a little over an hour and maybe an hour and 15, 20 minutes to get up there. Did have my in-laws with me, so.
Long, long way.
But anyway, we made it, and it was very enjoyable. And one of the things that Pete didn't tell you, and he has a whole nother story, and he can't, I don't know if he has time to go into that story tonight, about, I'll briefly touch on it, if I may, is that I believe it was your, was it your mother?
Correct.
That had cancer, and she had a drug that, I guess, a test.
It was, it was a drug pre-approved for another type of cancer, thyroid cancer, that the FDA was experimenting with other types of cancer, and pancreatic cancer, which is what she had, it was a drug trial set up for that. And that the likelihood of a normal pancreatic cancer patient's about 18 months. So, what does she have to lose? Maybe this will help somebody else in the future. Well, that was six years ago, and she's still with us today. The drug worked.
Yeah, and that's kinda how this whole thing got started, you know, I'm assuming to say that's how it got started.
It did, it did. And I missed one important point, that the drug almost didn't make it to market to begin with, with the thyroid cancer, that once it's in the labs, it gets so far, but they have to do so many tests of so many kinds before there's enough evidence that the drug works, before a drug company will pick it up and take it the rest of the way through the Food and Drug Administration. And that there's this gap that a lot of drugs fall off into, and they never make it any further. And the National Foundation for Cancer Research partially funded them to get them over that gap. They don't look for money at the end, they don't look for funding the whole thing, they try to get other organizations together and say, "Hey, come on, guys, we can take this drug, we really think this is a winner, let's all contribute together and get them over this hump here, so that the drug companies can pick them up." And that's how that drug made it to market.
Last thing I wanna say too, Pete, is that, you know, it's all, it's all a volunteer. You've got Jerry and you've got Mark, and you've got 11 or nine other people that help you.
Don't forget my wife.
And your wife, I'm sorry, you know, of course, your wife, you know, puts up with you too, right?
That's exactly true, yeah.
But, you know, what all the effort that you guys do, and, I mean, what I see, and it touched me because my wife also, you know, is a cancer survivor, and many of you people in this room have, or may be, or may know, everybody knows cancer survivors, we all do. And I'm very thankful for what it does, but the, I guess what I'm, what I'd really like to say is, I've, this is very unique, and I can see that in 10 years from now, or seven years from now, that people line up to go to, to Cramerton, they're gonna be lined up to go to, this is nothing like it anywhere. And we're not, they're not doing it to, because they wanna be, they're not doing it to be, to get the attention, they're doing it for a great cause. And it's touching to me, and I appreciate what you guys do, and, you know, I see, I see it bringing something to Indian Trail that pretty soon, they're gonna load their families up and say, "Well, you wanna go to Indian Trail tonight, or do you wanna go to, you wanna go to Cramerton tonight?"
Yeah, yeah.
I really, I do, I think it's gonna be that special.
And it's that feedback that we get that keeps us going year after year, that everybody's very appreciative.
And you're not asking for money, you are asking for money, but you're not, you're not coming to the town and saying, "Hey, we want the town to..." You're asking for help from us, is basically what we're, what he's doing, is saying, "Hey, do we know people that can help me build this for the town?" And I think it's gonna be a great thing for the, for the towns.
Minimal, just help us get the word out.
Yeah, just help, let's get the word out.
Yeah.
I'm done, anybody else have anything to say?
Yeah, I'll go next. Hi, Pete.
Hi.
You said your startup fee is, fee is $600,000?
That's what we're looking for, to get started with construction, correct. That's, that's our budget.
Are you at a point where you could tell how much you've...
We've raised about $66,000 in cash and material so far.
Okay, and how many acres was that again?
We've been offered up to two acres, but we're needing just a little over one acre.
Are they donating this to you?
Basically, they are. For legal reasons, we do have to set up a lease, but they're leasing it to us for a dollar a year.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yeah, very generous people.
Just curious.
20-year lease, yeah.
Okay, what is your electric bill?
Most months in December, it actually goes down, because my wife and I are outside, working with traffic every night. We help park all the cars, we hand out flyers, hand out candy canes to everybody inside the car. That's how we can count the number of cars, the number of people that show up. So, we're not inside watching the TV and have all the lights on. So, the lights that we have on our house, all LED, all low voltage, consume less power than it would be if we were inside the house.
Really?
Yeah.
That's interesting. I've seen the program on TV, where you said they approached you.
Yes, yeah.
People got really excited about it.
It's a great show. It's just, it just wasn't something we were looking to get into if it was gonna expose us to more traffic. We already have a traffic issue, people know who we are. It's an honor just to be recognized by them, that they would like to have us on, but it just wasn't something that we were looking to really take on.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, hi, Pete.
Hi.
I was writing a couple of, just jotting down some thoughts as you were doing your presentation. One of the questions that I had, you went to the county to get approval from them, is this property all in the county?
It is all in the county, correct.
The other thing, did the county, is this, since this is gonna be open to the public, are they required anything like ADA and those kind of requirements?
These are, we're looking to move a little forward on the funding before we go and talk with the permitting department for the building permit. But yeah, this is something that we're having to talk with them about, and where I think realization of reality needs to come in, that we're operating 132 hours a year, not seven days a week, and that the existing farm operates perfectly fine with the current parking situation. And that there has been, and I understand where the county's coming from, they have a cookie cutter plan for a convenience store, or for daycare, or for anything, but we come to them with this, and they're like, "I don't know what to do." And everybody's falling back to the default plan, was to make sure that everything's in there that we need to, to cover ourselves. So, everything's extreme on the code, and I can appreciate where they're going, but, you know, they're, at one point, they were commenting that we were gonna need to spend 1.2 million to pave the existing parking lot. And that, that means that we had to put up curbs, and we're gonna have to do a settling pond. And that doesn't make sense for just operating 132 hours for an existing parking area that works perfectly fine now. And I think that when we talk, we sit down and understand each other, I think that we're gonna be able to work things out and get things under compliance. So, we want to be open to handicapped persons. My parents are both in their mid-80s, and that it would be a challenge for them to get to this structure now. I wanna make sure they can see it, and I'm sure others would like to see it too. So, we will take the... So we will take the steps that we need to, to make it accessible, but we just want to put things in perspective, maybe we only need to do the paving of the pads that are handicapped required, not the entire parking lot, yeah.
Pete, oh, sorry, it's 6:30, Jerry.
Okay, one other thought that I had was, as far as volunteers, I read in the Inquirer that SPCC has a construction program where they built tiny houses, that they're going to be auctioning off, and you've probably already thought about this, but perhaps you could work with the SPCC and their construction and their electrical department when you get to that stage as well.
That's a great idea, thank you.
We have Boy Scouts here in Indian Trail and in the surrounding area, and then, I don't know, can we link, can the town link this to the town website? Is that an option? Is there any legality issues there to try to promote, you know, donations or anything?
When you say link it to the town site?
Yeah, he was, you know, Pete was asking if we could promote it somehow, the town, could we do it through the website, or do it?
Absolutely, what we're planning to do with Pete is he's going to bring a model that you could see it lit up at night, we're going to put it down in the hallway, and also we're going to work with Mike, he's going to provide us with some videos, so we could put some of it on our website, and the last item is we're working on the marketing campaign, we could include that in it too. There's the areas where we're going to do that.
Patrick, as we had a little sneak preview before, we kind of talked a couple of weeks ago, he's been very gracious with helping us out, but I love your suggestion, especially with SPCC, yeah.
I've got some other notes, I'm rushed on time, I really, I support this, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much.
I think it'd be another, you know, attraction that we sorely need here, and I wish you a lot of success.
Thank you very much.
Pete, if you wouldn't mind leaving your contact information for council members, there's a lot of questions, and you did ask them if they had any ideas.
Absolutely, bring them on, because that's how this works, yeah. If you want to use your own mind, you want to get so far, but if you open it up to let others help, you'll go a long way, so fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
We can, I mean, it's 6:30, do you just want to go right in? If we need a break in the middle, we'll just call for one, or does anyone need a break now? Everyone good? Okay. This time, I'd like to call the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 12, 2019, to order. If you have a cell phone, please place it on silent, if you need to take a call, please step outside. Everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the republic of which stands, one nation, one God, and in this world, one liberty, and justice.
Everyone remains standing for a moment of silence, and in remembrance of a town volunteer long-serving on many boards at his town for his countless hours of service, Mr. Arthur Spur. This time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I want to add item 10C.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item 10C, CAM.
Attraction.
Attraction.
The attraction, correct.
Okay. Okay. Council, okay, any other additions or deletions? Not, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? The record stand, all are in favor, Mr. Morse opposing, motion passes four to one. Brings us the presentation, citizens of the quarter, there's co-recipients for the third quarter, Ms. Lorraine Evans, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, come on up, Lorraine. This is for citizen of the quarter for the third quarter. Now, for those who weren't here when we gave these out, Lorraine and her husband, Gary, both do a lot for the town, Gary works for the town, but Larry, Lorraine, huh?
Larry.
Larry, Lorraine, she's a volunteer, she does a lot for the Sheriff's Department, she does so much, you know, giving to other people all year round, and this is what this award is for, a citizen of the quarter, and I can't think of anybody any more special or any more deserving for all the volunteer work that you do for the Sheriff's Department and for just people in need, and that comes out of the love that you have in your heart, and we're lucky to have you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The other one, the other co-recipients, Mr. Arthur Spur, is Mrs. Spur here tonight?
Diane is playing the piano.
Okay, we will make sure she gets this. I don't know if she wants to come in and receive it. Okay. And we have a recipient for the fourth quarter, Mr. Pete Kimball. Come forward, sir.
All you're doing, all you have yet to do.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Mayor, for those who did, most of you just saw he gave a presentation, Pete's the gentleman, I know a lot of you kind of walked in right here at the end, is the gentleman who has the house in Brandon Oaks, that you see, that's beautiful, and people lined up for hours to pull up and see it, all volunteer, it's an all-volunteer thing, and he's raised a lot of money for the Cancer Society, so thank you very much, Pete, for all you do. And the volunteers, it's not really just Pete, it's Mark behind him, and Jerry, and Ms. Kimball right behind Pete, so it's all of you that Pete just gets to come up and get the plaque for tonight, that you do so much. Thank you.
Our second presentation's from the ABC Board, Mr. Latz, are you here?
All right, good evening. I want to first thank the town for giving us just a few minutes here, I'll be brief. We wanted to just point out a milestone, do we have the, oh, there we go. So the, we distributed our second quarter distribution on July, or January 31st for $50,000, and we were looking at total distribution for the town of Indian Trail, and in our eight and a half years, we surpassed the 1 million mark on this last distribution. We, total distribution was $1,044,346, and I know that, you know, we're quite proud of that, everyone at the store is proud of that, and they've all worked really hard, and we were talking about it at our last ABC meeting, and it was brought up that we should make a presentation here for you guys to know where we stand so far. So that is total distribution there, and then on the second slide is our total distribution for alcohol education as well, and that's 121,300 in the eight and a half years. And those are, the three that we contribute to are the Arc of Union County, Union County Drug Treatment Court Foundation, and Turning Point. And that hasn't, it's just, it was, it's just been three the past two years, I believe, and before that it was just two, but we're pretty proud of how much we've contributed there as well. And the last slide is our council member, Mr. White there, or council member, ABC member, this was another milestone for us, we, our fiscal year 2017, 2018, final distribution to the town was 200,000, and that was by far the biggest distribution we made at the end of a quarter. So that's all I have for you, we just wanted to, you know, bring it to your attention and just show you what we've been doing over there, and, you know, we're all working hard to give you guys as much money as we can. Thank you.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, one question, Mr. Latz. What can the town do to help the ABC Board be more successful, the ABC Store or the
Right now, I think, I think with you coming, or a council member from the town of Indian Trail every month, I think that's been a great help. I think we've opened up the line of communication, you guys know what we're doing each month, we are able to talk to you, and we're still hopefully going to have that time where we can get together and kind of, I guess, make a roadmap for the future, and figure out, you know, how we can coexist together and give you the best distribution we can, as well as making sure that we are providing ourselves, setting us up for the future to be able to make the biggest distributions we can.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to take a step back for a moment, Mrs. Spur has arrived, if she'd come up to the front.
Thank you for loaning him to us all these years.
I love this. Oh, that's nice, thank you very much. He's smiling now, walking on his feet of gold, but smiling. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing him.
That brings us to public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, you may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation, and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience, as well as the speakers, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor, if you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, respectfully request that prior to airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concerns. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect the town employees' rights to a fair hearing to your grievance. Step to the microphone and state your name, your three minutes will begin. Butch Austin.
Austin.
Is, Butch Austin was first. Is Butch here?
Charles Stein.
Charles Stein, right, you were number two.
He might know something you don't.
Yeah, right, maybe Butch left.
Do you know Butch Austin?
No, Mr. Stein, go right ahead.
He's not here, so he's okay.
Go ahead.
I understand, I'm a retired pharmacist, I hope on the first policy, and I can say that I'm a bricklayer, I'm not responsible for, I'm a teenager, I'm not here, I'm a high of small business people, and I heard, the big concern with the mayor is the number of cars coming through the streets, and the possibility of street work being done during the town. I talked with an engineer, he's my friend, dear to Mr. Lee Answard, and when I talked with Stanford, the first thing he said was, well, I don't, really don't know anything about this, because I haven't heard anything from the town of Indian Trail. But he wanted to confirm that the traffic camera on Indian Trail, but it's $20,000 per day, it's $20,000 per day. He said that the town beautiful, I, for this, I'm worried, and no town I'm near to, to the town of Indian Trail, I don't know if that's taking place here. My question to him was, or I stated to him was, that what we're really concerned about the number of cars coming through here, is people trying to work on the street at the same time. And I questioned him, I said, there's a lot of DOT policy, that if the traffic is greater than 10,000 cars a day, if the traffic should be to do that work at night. He said, it's a loop, and he said, it's not named, but, whatever, what he said is this, he said, if the town of Indian Trail consults me, I will tell them they should do the work at night. So this is really what we're here about, simply to ask you to please consider doing this work at night. If you can't do it, postpone, so it's just not connected, it hasn't been completed, and the traffic camera's down, I'm going to have to do this work.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Michael Faulkner Berry.
Good evening, Michael Faulkner Berry, 19th and 30th Circle. First, congratulations to all the citizens of the board, Mr. Pence. Also, Mr. Evans writes a good poem about 9/11, Astro, it read to you sometime, it's been published, it's that good. Also, I'll let you know that one of the council were nominating Art Spur for citizens of the quarter, and he didn't know, I called him that night, and he was very joyous, he was very depressed, and so I called him and let him know the news. He said, thank you very much. I even said, who nominated, he had the nomination, I said, thank you, Mr. Morris, I feel himself. That being said, and those we missed, and those others we've missed in the past, I just names on a piece of paper, this person's behind those names. I mentioned someone in the past, Bob Green, Jim Bruceon, Public Safety, there's two, Mr. Crunk, Ambassador to the Community, many years. I said, I've participated in these meetings for many years now, along with the safety of the meetings, and on the agenda tonight, I'm noticing, Old Business Miracle League, Mr. Graves, usually named the side of the agenda item is the person who either requested the agenda. the agenda item or is gonna do the presentation. I spoke to Mr. Drays Saturday in person. He said he wasn't gonna be here. I'm confused. Why is his name on this? It is still on the agenda of he has no participation in this. It needs to be addressed. If the Miracle League is a done deal, then let's move on. Let's make other plans. But to put his name on this, knowing he's not gonna be here, is just flat-out wrong. Thank you.
Let's time close the public comments and move to the law enforcement update. Captain Cobal.
Counsel.
Oh, council comments, sorry. Council comments rebuttal, sorry. Sorry, Chase.
I have nothing to add.
Anybody? Mr. Morris?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring some context to this, what Mr. Stein was speaking about. You know, we have a, a project that's in planning right now, and that's the complete street for Indian Trail, and that's Indian Trail Road. They've had stakeholder meetings, that's the normal process. They'll have public hearings as well to get public input. Um, one of the challenges, as we all know, is traveling down that road. And, uh, so there was a discussion regarding when the roadwork, if the roadwork does take place, when it will happen. Um, so, a lot of the small business owners feel that their businesses will be impacted negatively if the road construction is done during the day. So, the preference there was at night. So, I just wanted to kind of bring some connectivity there of, of those comments and what that was about.
Anyone else? Nope. We'll close council feedback. Captain Cobal, take two.
Good evening. I'm gonna be real brief, but I passed out of, I may have passed him down in January, um, just kind of some summary, a screenshot of what we had going on on the north side and the south side of town, just for those that are listening. The south side of town, we had 438 calls per service in January, 559 on the north side of town, 1,174 self-initiated activities on the south side of town, 1,379 on the north side of town. Overall, average response time on the south side of town, 11 minutes 28, and 8 minutes 46 on the north side of town. So, what we've done, after looking at last year's stats, and we really started working with, started to shift a little bit our focus on the north side, because that's where our call volume's coming from, is where our workload's been at. And for anybody that's not, not familiar with, about a year and a half ago, we divided the town up into working districts and were utilizing basically the railroad as our crossing point. So, the north side of town gets the benefit of getting to all the retail businesses and all the, the 44 doors. So, the activity level on the north side of town are obviously gonna be somewhat skewed because you've got that, that big chunk of, of business up there. So, then I just broke down from the calls for service down below that, where you just got some different alarms, business checks, some of the top things that can get much volume out, just to kind of throw out there on, on that. So, one of the things that I pointed to is the improperly parked vehicles. And I put that on there for a reason, because I know that sometimes you guys get third-party complaints and pictures and things like that, just like the town does sometimes. And we always encourage residents that if you've got a parking issue, pick up the phone and call us. That's what we're here for. Um, like we've said from the beginning, we're not going out hiding in bushes waiting on you to park your car, just to come out there and stick you up a sticker on the issue, or to write you a citation for it. Our goal, what we're all is to make sure that our service delivery vehicles are able to navigate through our streets and get to your houses, whether that be ambulance, fire truck, UPS, the Amazon package on FedEx, and the kids on the school bus, things like that. So, you know, we're not able to resolve every parking problem in over two minutes, but we sure can't resolve them if you don't call them, let us know about them. So, you know, I encourage you, rather than take a picture and send the 47 people an email, simply pick up the phone and call us. But by the time everybody gets the email, checks it, looks at it, gets out there, the car's probably not in the same spot it was in the first place. But we're working through that, and I had some good conversation with Council McIntyre, and I think in the upcoming meeting, we're gonna be presenting, uh, some stuff to where we maybe wanted to, to remove a line or two here or there to tighten up to our current ordinance that we got now. But certainly, the ordinance that we have now is much, much, and I'll say it again, much, much, much better than what we had in the years past. Gives us a good workable tool. And for the most part, I'd say it's pretty successful in making sure that the delivery routes are available for the buses and the mail and everybody else. So, the, um, currently, right now, already, just now in February, our guys have already passed, we're doing online insider's training. So, it seems like we're constantly training, which is a good thing. But, so they've started that this, this past week with the online for the year of 2019. And a couple of things, I told Patrick, I would just kind of bring your attention, make you aware, I'll catch you. You had heard about it over the past two weeks, is we had two back-to-back times that we had suspicious packages found and reported here in town. The most time-consuming, one of them was a suitcase that was left in the parking lot of First Baptist Church on Saturday while they were having Halloween's going on. Um, that in turn led to a detection dog coming out, that we have, that dog alerted on that package that they had some type of, of, you know, suspicious smell to it that didn't seem good and not good enough for us to decide we're just gonna go pick it up. So, we had a pretty rapid response from Charlotte. One of their bomb techs was close by, came by, looked at it, ended up coming out and, uh, x-rayed the device for us and their bomb squad. But it caused us to have several vehicles, the R's and C and P's out there. And so, that obviously lifted the tension of news and crowd nerves and things like that. But at no point in time did we feel like anybody was in harm's way. We had, we had a good barrier in between the folks that were there, and it felt like they were contained.
Bless you.
And at the end of the day, it turned out to be what exactly we wanted. We really had to help them and stuff. And then the second one was over in the, uh, in the neighborhood of the north side of town, where we had a suspicious package. And we didn't have to have that much of a law enforcement presence before we were able to figure out after a little bit of time and getting some neighbors moved on that the lady had actually gotten sweet potatoes that her friend was supposed to bring her to the week four. So, if you get sweet potatoes, or you're digging them up, bringing them home, for gosh sakes, send a text or email or call them, and I hope they were good. So, the other thing, I got Daniel Stepp back here in the back. I gotta, I gotta embarrass him, introduce him for a minute. But Daniel started with us about three weeks ago. He 's got 25-year veteran from McInnes County Sheriff's Office. And I've been knowing this man for a long time to look up to him, and happy and pleased that he was able to make a transition, move over here with us. And in addition to that, I've already thrown him to the burner by introducing him to Rocks, because Mr. Stepp happens to be the HOA president for one of our unincorporated donut hole neighborhoods. Now, I said, you know, I told Rocks earlier, I can't do much more for you. I got the HOA president on the payroll for you to talk to him. At that point, I can't make them annex in the town, but at least get them to table talk. So, but they've had some good conversation outside already. So, I did, uh, I did wanna go ahead and confess that I kidnapped Patrick on occasion from here lately, so if you try to call him to come by to see me. I steamed him and get him out of the office last week. He made me go out and show him the 40 billion barrels that I was talking about, we counted them, and there are 40 billion barrels I have to give him. So, we did, uh, we had some good conversation and, and we're able to get out in the community and ride around and see some things that he's able to bring back, quality of life issues that Rocks is working on for us, and also to talk about other things. So, I think it's a real good outing sometimes just to get out of the office and go out and look at some of the things that are impacting people. When we get to see them, y'all, I've heard me say over and over, "We're the government knocks on the door. You don't come to our office. We're usually showing up to talk to you for something." But we hear these things. So, from time to time, I come to see them and say, "Hey, this is some of the things I'm hearing in the community." And I think that's good. That gets a lot quicker response for the people getting frustrated, getting on Facebook and posting about it for three years and then finally deciding that they want to get involved and making a change happen. We bring Patrick out and let him knock on their door and talk with them too. So, it's been pretty successful. Our town staff enjoys break care nowadays. So, I appreciate you guys' time. If you may have any questions.
I do. Did you ever find out what was in the suitcase?
Nothing.
Nothing? Did you say that already?
Nothing.
Or can you, could, I was, I was hoping you was gonna say like a million dollars or something, had a funny smell to it.
And I'm standing here. I may have even given you a play. No, in all, in all seriousness, those dogs are trained, you know, that we don't know what was in there. But a good example, a couple of years ago, we used, and we're lucky, we're fortunate, we have an ATF agent that lives here in the town that also has explosive detection dogs. And then we have one on staff. And so, the good thing is that we, we can pretty much have a resource. A lot of times, a couple of years ago, we used the ATF's dog in a school for a threat that was called Interlake One Evening. And it was near my house, that's the log roll there, you know, we'd be done in 15 minutes. And I think about eight and a half hours later, we were still there because that dog alerted on to a band instrument. And it turned out that that band instrument had been cleaned with a rag that had also been used to clean the firearm, because it was dove season that year. And so, I gotta give it to that dog as smart as I am. But, um, you know, there's, there's always an answer for what they're hitting on. But there's so many training tools that, that they train with, because, you know, explosives can be made with so many different common type tools. And so, you know, we err on the side of caution. And, you know, we were happy to see that there was nothing in there. But I wish the dog would answer the questions when we keep asking him, "What are you smelling?" But he ain't telling us nothing yet. And so, it, yeah, it was nothing, nothing in there now. So, we don't know what was in there for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chase.
Thank you.
Brings us to the consent agenda. There's no changes. I need a motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Howell made a motion to approve. All in favor? That passes unanimously. Brings no public, it brings us to Old Business, item A, the Miracle League. Mr. Sadek, I'm gonna drop that off to you.
Mrs. Queen, did, did we send an invite to Mr. Drays to be here with us tonight?
Uh, I did send an invite to him. We told him that we looked forward to seeing him, and I got no response back from him.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I don't have any comment in regard to future space for a Miracle League as you, as we've shown you and shown council last time that we could fit that playground somewhere at Crooked Creek Park. So, if the funding comes in in the future, you know, we will take care of that. So.
Counsel, any discussion or questions?
A question. Are, are you saying we're no longer holding them a spot? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is that there is a spot available that we could make it available if the funding comes in one day. That, that spot right there, it does not conflict any with Crooked Creek Phase Two. So, anytime it happens, David, if we have the funding, we could always fit it in there.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
I gotcha. So, well, the, the one comment, we've had this here, we've talked about it many times, about the Miracle League and I, you know, I've been very supportive of the Miracle League for years, surely has. I know a lot of us have been, and would love to see it be successful. But you still cannot, you know, we've got to do something sooner or later, you know? We have to either designate that parkland for, for the Miracle League or move on. And, you know, it's kind of like we've, we've, uh, we've gone and asked David, uh, Mr. Drays several times, uh, does he have, you know, the funding for it? And he has not, and he does not. And, and that's just my guess, that the reason, I'm guessing, I'm not saying it's the reason he's not here. He's probably not here because he doesn't, doesn't have the funding. So, um, I mean, I guess we'll end up having to make a decision of whether or not we just say, put stock to it and say, you know, "Good luck," because the town doesn't, as much as I'd like to see the Miracle League succeed, the town doesn't have to be a part of the, the Miracle League. It doesn't have to donate the land for it. We wanted to donate the land for it. Um, but, um, is, is there, I guess I'm asking you, Patrick, is there any advantages to going ahead or disadvantages to keeping that land open there? Or should we get maybe a recommendation from the town on, to, you know, it's time, it's, it is time to move on. I, I think it's time. I think council probably agrees that it's time to move on and, um, you know, and wish Mr. Drays the, all the luck in the world in, in, uh, in doing this. But, you know, to keep doing the same thing that we're keep doing is bringing them up, bringing meetings up and, and either not, not coming to the meeting or, or not, you know, corresponding with the town isn't, isn't very helpful either. So, I think the town's being very nice in the fact that it says, "We'll, we'll hold this land for more time and more time and more time." And then a, as, as people see, we get criticized for, for trying to be ni, uh, nice. And, and basically, what I'd like to say is, "Good luck, Mr. Drays." Um, I've worked personally, uh, with them to try to get this to work for them. But if they're, if they're not gonna do it, they're, they're not gonna do it. And that's just, I guess I'm just kind of speaking my mind on that. So, anybody else have any kind of?
Before anybody chimes in, Patrick, what type of action are you needing from the council?
Just exactly what Mr. Coens said.
Basically, free up that one section of land to move forward with Phase Two?
Uh, right now, where, where I showed it last time on the conceptual drawing, it's reserved. But if we need to expand the ADA playground or need to add other, other facilities out there, we need to move on. That's exactly what David was saying. So, it's reserved right now, but it might not be there maybe a month or two months from now in case we need to add to Crooked Creek. So, so sooner or later, we're gonna use that space and it will not be available. So.
Ms. Howell?
Do we have any responsibility to, that we're, we've been connected with this? And the money has been rescinded from the Rushing family. And David, you know, went and had two golf tournaments, and we raised some money. What happens? Is that just their responsibility? Or do we have, you're shaking your head, Karen?
Yeah, the, there was a 501(c)(3), I believe, or a nonprofit that was put it together. And so, it's up to them. And frankly, if, if, you know, I think the town can always just say, "Hey, if, if, come back again. If, if, if things change and you've got, you know, more funding or if something else happens, we'll look around and certainly see if we can help you find some space, and we'll do the best we can." But we can no longer reserve, based on what council's saying, we're not gonna reserve that one. But please don't stop. We, the town would love to have this. It's a wonderful asset for the town of Indian Trail, and we'll do whatever we can if some, if you all come with some funding and, you know, another idea to make it happen. So, I think that's probably a fair way to handle it.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion or?
Consent or motion, consent?
Did you have something to say, Mr. Morris?
Are you talking to me?
No, I think Jerry looks like he wants to say something.
I'm measuring my words. Um, we've been kicking this can down, down the road quite, quite a long time now. And we have, I believe there's gonna be a presentation soon about the, the master park plan for Crooked Creek. Can we table this until then? And then, at that point, I, if Mr. Drays and the Miracle League don't secure the funding by that time, I will probably make a motion that we, we just go ahead and part ways with the whole concept and proceed with whatever the master park plan says. So, I'm just making a motion. We table it for now.
So, before you make that motion, um, we've been, we've been discussing this for a while. Um, I know we've made several overtures to Mr. Drays to come on, right? I know at some point last year, I think he lost a family member, so therefore, there was a bereavement period, so he couldn't come in. But I think at that point in time, we said that we would give him, last time where we, I think when we met at the last meeting, or the meeting before that, we said, "We would give him until this meeting to kind of respond." You said you've sent out communication to him, and he's not responded to you. I think now we need to make a decision, in all honesty. As much as I would, I am all for sports, especially for those among us who really need it. As much as I would really like to have that opportunity, I think we kind of need to move forward with what we, what, what we need to do, especially with the Phase Two. Um, I think that, that's one of the items here. And if he does secure the funding, and hopefully he does, then I think that we would continue to work with him in whatever capacity that the town can. But to hold it up again and give him another period where he doesn't even respond. If he responded and he asked for more time, I think it would be prudent to postpone it. But the fact that he doesn't respond on, especially with the multiple invitations that have gone out, kind of leads me to think that we probably need to act now. And that's just me speaking. But at some point, we, we, we have to make that decision.
Well, I, I'd like to, if I might, I think same, Marcus is saying exactly what Karen said, you know, is I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move on from the Miracle League and, um, and state that if in the future the Miracle League wants to, um, come back to the town and say, "Hey, we've got funding," then the town will sit down and, and negotiate with them and say, "Yeah, we'll try to help you out in all we can and find a place for you." And that's about the best way I can think of to word it.
I'll withdraw my motion to table it, please.
Okay. All right.
All right. Well, then I'll, instead of repeat that, I'll, is that good?
Can I, I just want to remind the council that we did pass a resolution back in, I believe, August that said we were going to, as of January 1st, if they had gotten the funding, we would designate the space. So, the motion would probably appropriately, appropriately be, um, the town is, has, is at this point in time opting not to a, um, reserve space in Crooked Creek Park for Miracle League field, but would love to hear back if something changes with the Miracle League.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved, yeah. Yeah, I kind of think, you said it, and then I said it, and Jerry said it.
Okay. All right. Mr. Coens made the motion. Okay. All right. Mr. Cohen's made the motion via the town attorney. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Brings us to Crooked Creek Phase Two budget. Mr. Sadek, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm showing on this screen right here, as you know, we do have $2.5 million to spend on Crooked Creek Phase Two. We're trying to reserve $1 million for the artificial turf right here at Chestnut Parkway. So, we're working with a budget of $1.5 million. Simply what you're looking at, these are the items that we feel that we could build out there. Also, this is the result of sort of two studies that were done in the past that kind of rank these items higher than any other items. So, this spreadsheet right here, kind of preliminary, it gives us a parameter to go ahead and reserve the money for each item. If we decide to do most of the engineering work in-house, that $80,000 will not be spent. The trails, the way you're looking at 7,532 linear feet of new trails at Crooked Creek. That's what I showed last time when I presented the concept. And exciting item is the second item, which is the BMX cycling. This is simply for young ones, not adults. We have 8,492 linear feet, which doesn't exist in any jurisdiction around here. So, that's gonna be very exciting. Both of them next to each other. The fishing pond that I shared with you guys, it's 7.1 acres. That's big enough. It's located in a very nice area that will not be impacted by the flooding or the wetland. We reserved a couple shelters in case people want to be next to the pond. Those shelters will be... we'll place them adjacent to the pond. And nine benches and little landscaping anywhere we need it. And 35 signs just to give the pedestrian and the young ones on the bicycles just some direction around the park. And we kept about $71,000 for contingency. We feel very comfortable about this budget, and we're gonna use it as a guideline so that we will stay within budget. And the last item is that that $1 million that we're reserving for the artificial field here at Chestnut Square Park, if we do get the grant from the NFL, that will give us another $250,000 to spend at Crooked Creek Phase Two.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions or concerns?
I've got a question, excuse me, on the fishing pond.
Yes, sir.
I think last time you were talking about a depth of five feet.
In this one, Michael, it's five to six feet. What we're trying to do is we cut on the high side and we build the dam on the low side. So, we're kind of working with the contour, so five to six feet.
Do we have any concerns that during dry weather, that there'll be fish kills?
Absolutely, Michael. We're gonna take into consideration the soil. We have to treat the soil to make sure it's cohesive and treated so we don't lose the water. Second item is we're gonna leave that to the expert, which is the club that Jason and Captain Chase they're working with. This is out of Raleigh. They kind of give us some guidelines on that. And we don't want it... if we make it deeper than that, Mr. Head, then we're gonna end up fencing part of it. So, there are a lot of ponds out there that they're shallow, and then they get deeper in the middle. But that's flexible, and it depends on the soil. We might hit rocks out there. That will make it completely different. So, in the engineering, as you see up there, I included testing. Simply, we hire a company to go out there and do some drillings to give us some idea about what we're gonna be facing.
Then on the BMX cycling, actually, my son and daughter did BMX back in Georgia. To what extent are we gonna have... is it just gonna be a bicycle trail? Or is it gonna actually be with humps and jumps and...
It's an excellent question, Mr. Head. What we're gonna do is we're gonna have a bush hog go out there and don't cut any of the big trees, simply the thin ones. And then what we're gonna do also, I've asked Captain Chase. He told me that his sons, they go out there and play the sport too. So, we're gonna use them to help us make that route after we survey it. But simply, it's gonna be dirt. And some of those banks that you're talking about, sometimes they built by themselves as the riders drive them around. But if we do have to build some for safety, then we have to install them. So, it will be made out of dirt, but not concrete.
Understood. But where I was going with that was any liability issue from the town staff?
No. That's another good question. What we've seen Chase and I in two parks in Union County, they didn't even have signage, but we've seen young ones ride in them. So, we will check with Karen on that and see. If she brings up something, then we'll take it from there.
Any other questions? We're good. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to litter pickup. Mr. Sadek?
Litter pickup. Thank you, Adam. Adam did survey the entire city. And that spreadsheet that you see up there, all the streets that he ran into where he felt that there's a lot of litter. Last year, council supported us by having a contract to go out there and clean these streets. I think, Adam, every one of them is a state roadway. So, we reached out to Lee with North Carolina DOT, and Adam negotiated with him, you know, some rating system. I think they were willing to pay their rates, which is, I think it'll add up to only $1,500 to do all these streets. So, I think Adam decided that to go ahead and ask for $5,000. Otherwise, we're gonna leave it to them to clean it. So, he's gonna continue communicating with them until they get all these streets taken care of. That's a lot of mileage right here and a lot of number of the streets. So, we're gonna continue knocking at their door until they get it done. If they don't, then we might come back to council and say, we're not getting anything from DOT and might ask for the same amount of money that we asked for last year to get our streets cleaned.
What's the timeline before you come back to council on that?
Go ahead, Adam.
So, we just got the email back from Lee this morning. And Lee said their contract states that they clean 12 times a year. I very highly doubt that they clean 12 times a year. So, that's what Patrick and I talked about today, is we're gonna send them an email every two weeks to a month and say, these streets need to be cleaned. These streets need to be cleaned. These streets need to be cleaned. And then, we'll just have to make a decision between staff and council as when do we want to say, well, they just haven't done it, so we're gonna have to do it.
Because that's the thing. It's... that's why I'm asking that question is, the residents drive on the streets. It's true that the streets, majority of the streets, if not all of them, are owned by... maintained by DOT. So, for us as residents, even those who, you know, are not here tonight, when do we come back? You know, when is the appropriate time to come back and say that, council, we need a decision from you in order to appropriate funds to be able to get that clean? Because that would really kind of enhance the town where we have sort of clean streets.
Not more than one month.
All right. Thank you.
Are you asking for a motion right now?
No, sir. Not at the present time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to solid waste recycle update. Mr. Sadek?
Okay. Jim, Adam and I, we've been working on this for about maybe a week, you know, on and off. But what we would like to share with you as requested by council, Adam and his staff, they reached out to all these municipalities that you see on the left-hand side. And he got data for all of them, what type of contracts they have, and all the rates that you see up there. We really tried to get something out of the database. But as I listed down at the bottom, even when we tried to make comparison, it was very difficult because some of them, they have different contracts, different condition, different terms and conditions. They have many variables. The rates weren't the same. And it all depends on where that landfill is at, the hauling and the trucking in and out, whether it was to a landfill or maybe to a recycling facility. We did not contact any vendors and ask for quotation. If you look at this spreadsheet, we're showing four jurisdictions that serve by waste connection. And some of the other ones too, like I think Republic and Waste Management, Adam, they did bid on our contract last time, and they were twice as high. So, we didn't see any reason why to contact them. And the rest of them, they're served by probably other vendors that other jurisdictions that we're not happy with. And they do have different combination, you know, different landfill and different subconsultant, et cetera, et cetera. So, we just wanted to share this with council. This is available, and we'll be more than happy to further discuss it if anybody has any questions. But that's the reason why we showed it on this slide. We tried to make conversions and, you know, come up with the same number of household and tried to make the comparison. But it was difficult and meaningless. So, we ended up by saying, you know, we got the data. If we want to compare solid waste rate, we could do that by itself. We want to compare recycling rate, we could do that by itself. But if you see under the recycling rate, a lot of them, a lot of the rates were included either in a solid waste rate or somehow differently in the contract. But if you look at the rate, you could see that most of them around the same, you know, $2.25 up to $3.15. Can you flip a second on Michael, please? So, what Adam, Jim and I, we came up with five options. And we're putting this before council. And after council give us some advice or guidance, we could move forward with saying this is what we think the best for the town. The first option is no cost to the residents. Stick to the contract. We did consult with Karen. Karen said the contract is... doesn't have any wiggle room for this recycling additional charges. So, that's one option. This is probably, I would say, the, I don't want to call it the most brutal-like option to the vendor, but just telling him, we're not paying anything. With that, if we decide, if council decide to go that route, then we have to do a lot of education right there. And then, at the same time, we need... Adam has already applied for a grant, and that grant money could go into educations. Option number two, just simply say, look, we want to be team players. You're asking for $298,000. We could go ahead and our part, we could contribute $100,000 a year. Simply, if you look under at the bullet items, the cost to the town will be $8,333 per month. It adds up to 64 cents per household per month to $7.69 for household per year. So, when we're looking at other municipalities and jurisdictions throughout the U.S., some of them agreed to pay $8 a month. So, that'll take care of, I think that should be $8 per household per month, Jim. It's not per year, is it? So, that's national number. But that's the figure that we'll be dealing with if we decide to share cost with the vendor and the cost not to exceed $100,000 per year. Third item would be in-house service. We could go out there and buy five trucks and hire the right people. And you could look at some of these figures. It costs us about $1.6 million a year. That's including financing. So, the debt service for a month will be $20,000 per month. The employees will be $25,000 per month. Tipping fees, $35,000 per month because we're doing it in-house. So, we have to take it to a landfill. Recycling tipping, 20. And then, the difference between what the vendor is charging us versus the town, $140,000 versus $100,000. So, we will be looking at saving of $40,000. That is per month, right, Jim? That's correct. The fourth option will be recycling centers. We just simply tell the residents that all the recycling materials needs to go to Union County recycling centers. Right there, if the contract, if we tell the contractor we're not recycling, that will save us $400,000 a year. But when we don't recycle, we're gonna see some of that recycling material in the solid waste bin. And the $50,000 that you see out there, that would be extra charge to take it to a landfill because it's solid waste. To take it to a landfill, that would be minimum. It's not maximum. So, the net saving approximately would be $350,000. If we say no recycling, you have to take the recycling to the 16 available centers in Union County. The option number four will be recycling once a month and not to exceed $75,000. So, we reduce the service to once a month, and we have to do a lot of education and kind of tell our residents where the recycling centers are, et cetera, et cetera. And then, we could always, if we want to do some of that in-house, we could always... we have small properties in towns here and there. One of them is located on the north side. Another one is located on the south side, where we could step in and spend some money and put some bins out there. So, you'll have more recycling centers within town. But that has to be operated certain hours during the week, certain hours on the weekend. And most of the time, they're run by volunteers, not full-time employees. So, this is the best we could come up with. And if council look at us to make a decision, we'll be more than happy to kind of tell you what options we think it... we favor and will work the best for the city. But we didn't want to go that far yet before presenting this information to council.
Did you want an answer tonight? Or did you want...
This is just for info only.
Just for information. Okay.
And as soon as we get feedback from council, definitely, next meeting, we'll come back and make recommendation if council wants to do so. But we want to give council at least a couple of weeks to look at the numbers and see what works for our residents.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind, would you get the contractors' input on what they're willing to put up to if we're gonna meet them? If one of those options the council chooses is to meet them halfway, what are they willing to do considering we're under no contractual agreement obligation to do anything?
Sure. Absolutely. We'll reach out and get some info from them. And we did, at one point, we did share with the vendor that if we want to share some of the cost, we threw a number out there, which is half of the $298,000. But after we did the research and looked at some rates, et cetera, et cetera, we felt that if we want to contribute, it shouldn't be more than $100,000.
Okay. And just for council's information, I was watching television the other day. Mecklenburg County has started airing commercials on Charlotte networks in regards to all this recycling crisis going on and showing people what not to throw in there and how times are changing for them. It was... I didn't hit record long enough, quick enough, to be able to catch it for all of you. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
That brings us to the self-funded fire tax district update. Mr. Sadek?
This is simply just to let council know that we made a decision based on your input, and we submitted to the county that we would like to keep the two self-funded fire department and a fee-funded one as they are right now without making a decision. And we did receive a letter from the county manager by saying thank you. And that's all what they needed for right now.
Any questions? Thank you, Patrick. That brings us to new business, FY 1920 budget priorities. Mr. Sadek, Mr. Wadowitz?
Thank you, sir. And I did put 45 minutes in case council have... And I did put forty-five minutes in case council have many questions, but I don't think it's going to take that long. Simply what we're going to share with you today, nothing different that we, what we shared with you last year, but what I wanted to do this year is I'm trying to inject these meetings during our town council meetings so we don't trouble you guys to come in on the weekend or ask you to be here for, for additional meetings. Simply what we, what we'd like to know from council is, you know, what is the vision in the future? And we listed the items that we think in desperate need for in the next five years or ten years. They're not necessarily going to happen tomorrow, but that's based on what we feel that we're going to need for long range. But simply have a plan and base the plan on these items that you see ahead of you.
Karen, that's it? Thank you for your presentation.
I think that's bad, Michael. Is that it? All right. We're doing much better now. All right. On the, on the left side, you see the FY nineteen twenty. So when, when we share our budget with the town council, these are the items that you're going to see in there. And simply what I did is I listed the project. Most of them are projects that spans over two budget years. And, and what I saw in blue, what I'm showing in blue is who funds the project. And what I'm showing in red is the savings that we accomplished so far for each project. A lot of savings, the staff working very hard and, and these are real savings. It's not like something we didn't spend. This is approaching the projects with these phasing. So simply the Highway seventy-four multi-use trail by hiring in, this is portion of the big trail, the one, the five point one million dollars. So that's saving by hiring in, Todd hiring in, in-house engineer to do the work. We're looking at new neighborhood sidewalks. We, we saved, we done that project at Brandon Oak and we saved ten thousand dollars. This is less than the contractor's cost. Old neighborhood sidewalks, our staff, since we increased, we increased their hours, working hours or work schedule, they're beginning to repair more deteriorated sidewalks. Private development trails, Rox and his group and engineering, we, we getting a lot of trails and most of the developments out there. So we, it's not costing us a penny. We're going to continue reaching out to developers to install them. The, the Greenway Trail, this is the other part of, other part of the five point one million dollars.
Can I ask a quick question? On, on the private developer trails, so the developers are giving us the land, is there any, any maintenance associated with it that we'll have to keep them up?
No, Michael, the, the one that we're mentioning right here are mainly built by them and, and maintained by them. Crooked Creek Multi-Use Trail, we, we've talked about these trails. So simply these projects are spanning. So we're going to come back to council and say this is our CIP and give you an update budget on expenditure, expenditures for each project. Indian Trail Complete Street, that six hundred and twenty that you saw at the beginning of the projects, I mentioned it before, we asked a consultant to, to give us his design budget and he said six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So we do have, we did hire an engineer and he's working on the projects, so that's saving in design by itself. Highway seventy-four Super Street is getting completed. We have not identified anything on our side that we need to do, but we might run into some. If we do, we'll come back to council and say we need five thousand, ten thousand for signage or whatever, but we have not identified anything yet. Chestnut Parkway, this is Phase Two. And Todd, I'm not sure this twenty-five thousand dollars, what it reflects for Phase Two. That could be probably in the design. Oh yes, that's, that's design hiring, RSNH. Now I remember, when we, when we were negotiating the design contract, they showed too many meetings with North Carolina DOT. These meetings was costing us money, costing DOT money and the consultants. So when we reduced the number of the meetings, we saved twenty-five thousand dollars. Chestnut Parkway Phase Two, that million dollar that you see out there, it's a minimum amount of saving when we told the state, we're not connecting to Monroe Road and we're not connecting to the roundabout on Gribble. So we shortened the limit for the project. Peace Drive is a project that we're going to try to do before the end of the fiscal year. Street maintenance, they're typical, that's the stuff that we do every year. Our engineering group just finished the resurfacing for FY seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Now, when the season begins, we're going to go ahead and start the resurfacing and all these four, four contracts under it. Is it March the fifteenth, Todd, when the paving season begin? Roundabout, that's Sardus Road, Sardus Unionville. I think this is saving from the Gill State acquisition. We worked with the school, it tried to, we met with someone with the school, tried to save the hundred and seven thousand dollars that we paid the school system, but we did consult with Karen and she said that is federal and we, most of the time the schools end up having the money for any acquisition out of their properties. Intersection Matthews Indian Trail Town Hall. We've, we did mention to council that we need to do something about the intersection ahead of us because we're getting more pedestrians. Old Town Hall Parking, this is just, Adam is doing the design himself right now. So that's a twenty thousand dollar saving. It's a two hundred thousand dollar project, so that's ten percent. Downtown Parking, we're looking into, I've tasked Jason to look into a system right now that will give decals, we'll, we'll bring more details to council as we get further with that. Simply decals to residents, at least two or three, that they could use it for their vehicles. But any other people from out of town, they'll end up paying for meters. Most of these meters, they work off of, off of solar energy and you could use credit cards for that. I'm not going to spend that much time on the right-hand side, but simply we want council to see, you know, what we could do the next five years and ten years. Most of the items are similar to the one that you see on the left-hand side. Some of them, they're not, they're brand-new items. As an example, you know, we put Monroe Road widening out there. We have not really made a decision. The project's, it's been delayed. Wesley Chapel Widening is going to happen within the next five to ten years. That's a thirty, I think, Todd, thirty-nine million dollars project making Wesley Chapel four lanes. We're going to continue resurface streets. We also reached out to Senator Todd Johnson when we met with him last time. We, we told him how frustrated we are with not getting North Carolina DOT neighborhood street repaired and paved. They're getting to a point right now that it's going to become irreversible and then we're going to end up reconstructing all those streets. So he's going to help us out, reaching out to North Carolina DOT. Signage, Adam's working on a, on a database right now. He drives at nighttime. Most of the signs that you see in the city, they don't meet compliance, the retro-reflectivity compliance. So they should be much better. But every time we collect information, immediately we turn it to North Carolina DOT and we tell them that those signs are out of compliance. So we never had that program in the past, so we're beginning to do that right now. Street improvement programs for non-standard roads and commercial parks. Sardus Drive improvements, that's a new project. Roundabout, you are familiar with the Indian Trail Gribble. That is a project too that could shut down traffic on Indian Trail Road when the state needs to install that, that project. Because that project cannot be built without shutting down the roadway, but nighttime could help because it has less traffic. And then the other two roundabouts that you see, intersection, we're looking into new intersections and some of them going to be funded by North Carolina DOT. Again, we're talking about the parking program. The parking program will work hand in hand with the annexation. Simply what we're telling our residents, if, you know, if you annex, you could use our parks, you could park for free uptown and at any parks. And for our non-residents, they, they're going to end up paying. Michael. Storm drainage, a lot of savings from storm drainage too. The biggest saving we had so far is canceling. So far, we think that Phase Number Two and Phase Number Three can be canceled and that's due to us coming up with the new alternatives for, for the pond and, and the pump. But the roadway system needs to be rebuilt though. So I would say between, out of one million, eight hundred thousand dollars, we spent probably about four hundred thousand dollars to fix the roadways out there. But we still end up with a, with a million, four hundred thousand dollars. And that money was coming straight out of stormwater. So we could take that savings and use it somewhere else, another part of the city. Indian Trail Neighborhood, Park Neighborhood Study is done and we're going to move to construction. Council approved half a million dollar last year. I think that will be sufficient to take care of the neighborhood. And then Indian Trail Park Neighborhood Construction and Beacon Hills. Beacon Hills by itself, we repaired that channel. Adam, I thought we spent about thirty thousand dollars there. So council appropriate, allow us to appropriate two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's more money that we could use somewhere else. In the consent agenda, Adam just opened bids for the floodplain and the catch basing pipe cleaning contract for this year and we were under last year's budget by thirty thousand dollars. So detention, retention ponds, wherever I'm so, I'm showing that dollar sign, these are new programs that engineering's taken, taken on. And we will be getting more revenues out of those programs. One of them we did share with council, the sediment and erosion control program and the town program. And then also Rox had, in a local agreement with Union County, we're going to work together on reviewing developments that half of it in Indian Trail, half of it in Indian, in Union County. So they agreed that they'll give us the fee back to Indian Trail. So that money comes back to Indian Trail. Under the long range, it, it's, it's nothing different. We're going to concentrate the next two to three years on bridge culvert maintenance because there are a lot of sediments right there and we want to prevent flooding. Also, we're going to try to replace a lot of those pipes that flooded the last time during the hurricane. So we're going to concentrate on items out there that they're not meeting the standards if council sign off on these projects when we bring them before council. Replacement, you can see that, that's the same thing I was talking about and the detention, retention, that's the same item. So most of the items you see on the left, that they're working good, we're going to carry on doing them on the left, on the right-hand side. If we go to IT and Communication, Mr. Mike Parks right here, listed on the left the stuff that we are going to continue doing. But couple more items on the right-hand side, when we could afford some money, the emergency notification and then upgrade the server, server capacity. We're getting to a point right now that the server doesn't have a lot of capacity. Security system, also capacity for the cameras and then video editing software and hardware. Right now, we don't have like a good camera or video camera and the, the software to use out there in events. We don't have anything like that. We don't have very sophisticated.
Oh, let me ask one question. Previous slide, you talked about the server capacity. Do we house all our information in-house here or do we have that in the cloud somewhere? Has, have, have any of you taken a look at keeping the server on hand, the technology? I'm going to assume it's a mid-range server, keeping it on hand and having to upgrade it from a software and hardware, which is the drive space versus the price that we would pay if we were to keep, we were to use Amazon web hosting or, or something like that? Is that something that we've considered from a, a savings standpoint?
Currently, all of our server capacity space is managed by our IT vendor. We do not own any of that equipment. It's part of our contract with him. Recently, we went through a process of trying to free up some more space on the, the server that we do utilize through Compinet World. But that is something that we could consider moving forward is do we want to purchase that equipment ourselves or do we want to work with him to be able to free up some continued space like we've, we've been doing the past three year, few years?
Go ahead. Parks, the items listed on the left is what we're doing for Crooked Creek Phase Two. We have the synthetic field at Chestnut and typical maintenance to keep the fields in good shape. On the right-hand side, as you see, we do have the ADA ball field, so I just put it in there. If the funding comes in while we have this space, it is. If it's not, then it'll go away, but council voted on that tonight, so I'll make that change. Neighborhood parks, if anything comes available out there. Our consultant right now is finalizing the Parkmaster Plan. He's a little bit delayed on that, but he might identify some pockets in the city, in the town where we could add these neighborhood parks in the future, not right now. Our budget, Parks budget for the next five years, it is what it is. That's, that's Crooked Creek Phase Two. That's, that's what we have for the next five years right now. And if, if we get the, the NFL grant and we put the artificial turf out there and council decides that we have to have the capacity, which is the seating area that I shared with you last time, then we could have those four or five rows of seatings all the way around the synthetic field. And park maintenance, nothing different. If we go to Union County Sheriff's Office, we are, Jim and I, we're awaiting the budget from Captain Chase. And what we anticipate is the agreement that was stricken many years back is that every year as we grow, they, they add one deputy onboard. So we have not received that info yet. And the Union County Fire Department, as I updated earlier, no change. As soon as the county and Johnny Blythe submit all the info to the county and they get deeper into the self-funded, this is when we come back to council and say, not only the council for Indian Trail, but for Stallings, Himby Bridge, Lake Parks, all together to make a decision whether they want to have, have it under one board, how many fire station, et cetera, et cetera. This is going to take at least a year, year and a half to, to come up with the numbers to be submitted to council in order to make a decision. Quickly on this one, this is budget and finance. What you see on the left, everything is current so far and not, not much different on the right-hand side, but a lot of good news. We're, we're not looking into raising taxes. We're not going to come before council and say we need anything that forces us to raise taxes. The investment that we have right now is, is doing good. Where they at? Jim recently moved a couple old investment that we weren't getting, but probably point nine five, Jim, right? That was the rate, but we're putting them under the North Carolina program, we're getting about two point two five up to two point three five. That's a much better rate. So every time there is an old investment, Jim tried to get rid of it and move it somewhere else so we could get better rates. Revenues based on historical information, Jim is happy with the auditor unless council comes back and say it's. Go ahead.
I always bring it up. How many, how many more years we got, Jim?
We got them for three years right now.
Three years, okay. So there's not anything we can't do at this point, unless we wanted to break the contract?
Right.
No problem. So that, was it a total of five years then? Okay.
We, for one more. I told you Mr. Head going to say something about that. Debt service, what we'd like to do is we took the bounds from six to five. And definitely anytime we, we have some savings, we'll come back to council and see, try to reduce those bounds as much as possible. So we might come back this year with another one that we could pay off. Incentives based on economic development grants, we, we're working on NF, NFL one. Incentives based on economic development grants, we're working on NFL one. Local board revenues, we continue to receive a portion of the profit from ABC. Veteran memorials, we're getting more people right now submitting and as you saw, it's the contractor's beginning and I think Adam and I, we feel that it's not gonna take more than two weeks to get it done. Property taxes continue to grow at least by three percent and sales tax, our average this year, four to five percent. Expenditure, we're maintaining staffing level. We're not gonna come back and say we need any staff for this coming year. We are fully staffed right now. So this is the FY nineteen twenty and not much changes in FY, actually that should've been long range, not FY ninety, nineteen and twenty on the right-hand side, but simply reflects the same items, not much changes. In planning, these items under annexation investment in revenue, Rocks gave an example right there. You know, town receives three hundred and seventy dollars in taxes for two hundred K house or thirty seven thousand dollar annually for hundred lot neighborhood. So that's a new revenue there, revenue stream. Chestnut Parkway Future Land Use Study, mainly internal staff preparation, the master plan, area long corridor as extension of downtown master plan. So we will be probably reaching out to council to move, maybe ask council to allow us to move forward with the master plan as an extension to the downtown. Definitely, the comprehensive plan is ready to be rewritten. We've got the UDO. In a couple of weeks, we're gonna turn it to Karen and Kevin. Any comments in regard to the land use map, Rocks, or any other planning instruments that we have out there that we think you're gonna be doing in the future?
Toby, some implementation tasks passed for UDO, we write once we've, the council, assuming the council adopts the zoning map, we have two studies in commission ahead and so we'll have a full...
And I totally agree with Rock on this item, hopefully in the future, that beautification improvement. Definitely, we could use some of that on US seventy-four, Unionville, Indian Trail, Wesley Chapel, Secret Shortcut, that's a big area planning right there and others. So we will be coming to council for, you know, propose to council on some of those beautification projects. Solid waste, increased in-house projects, this is the saving that Adam had by his crew, hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. We've already shared that with council. What he's doing right now, the longer hours is allowing Adam to split the crews between different projects first. Seven hours wasn't enough, so he had to keep everybody on one project. Right now, he has that flexibility to do so. And additional street system maintenance, as we've, you know, taken on more streets, that's more work. And then Adam is working with planning and engineering on neighborhood trail connections. So anytime there is a chance to connect a trail from one neighborhood to another, they're all working on that. Long range for public works and solid waste is if council decides in the future to select in-house solid waste department, we could do that. Additional park area, after we build Crooked Creek Phase Two and artificial turf, Adam is gonna be doing more work out there. And it wouldn't be a bad idea to, actually when Captain Chase took me out last week driving around town, there are some potential small facilities, three to four acres with low pricing that used to be like a concrete mix plan or something like that, that could be in the future, another location where we could store sand and mulch and everything that Adam and his staff can use. As the city growing, as the town growing, that little place out there is a bit tiny for expansion. And I'm sorry, Michael, the last three items is admin, legal and HR. You know, we base our budget based on other departments, so we will be sharing those as we get them with council. Any questions? I know that was a lot, but we just gonna put that before you and make it available so the next time we meet on the budget, at least you have these items ahead of you and if you have any comments, we could discuss it and take it further.
We'll get a copy of this.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, no questions? Okay. That brings us to town volunteer boards. Mr. McIntyre?
Um, so I'll, yeah, no problem. I'll use this opportunity just to thank everybody who serves on the town board. We have the ABC Board, Stormwater Committee, Planning Board, Parks and Recs and the Board of Adjustments. And, you know, I know sometimes it does take a lot of you away from your families where you have to come out maybe once or twice a month to a meeting, but the mere fact that you serve on the town board is really important to us and it does help kind of keep things moving. So I wanna say on behalf of the council, I wanna say to all of you, thank you for serving. I also wanna remind everyone that as the year is coming, I think June is usually the time when we have a lot of vacancies coming up, so if you're not serving on the board right now, please do consider stepping up and volunteering your time if you have it. You can always go onto the website to complete one of the registration forms and you can send it into our town clerk, who would be more than happy to pass that on to the council for consideration. So that, I'm gonna be brief, I'm not gonna be as long as Patrick was just a while ago, although he did provide valuable information, but to all of you who serve, we do appreciate the service that you provide to our town. And if you're not serving, please consider serving and if you are serving and you want to continue, you do have to send in your application again. So thank you very much.
That's it?
That's it, sir.
Okay.
Well said.
Well said, Marcus. That brings us to item C, the attraction. Mr. Sidik?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gary Evans and myself, we've learned about a cultural, educational opportunity that could make a significant impact to the town of Indian Trail as an attraction. So the first thing we did is we reached out, reached out to the CEO of that organization to learn more about the project and we kind of updated council as we're moving forward. But what we did is something typical that most jurisdictions do, if there is an opportunity out there for a tech company or an attractions that they're looking into relocating within the metropolitan area or from outside the metropolitan area, most of the time, you know, staff, they reach out to learn about the projects and come back to town council for information. So not only that, but we've also reached out to county representatives and then on top of that to our Senator Todd Johnson. Simply when we met with council, with Senator Todd Johnson, he asked us what can he do? We provided him with the information. We led him to the ride department in Raleigh that could assist us. Simply this type of attractions, it requires local, state and federal funding and it's a great opportunity for this cultural, educational organization to come to our town. We feel that a prime location for them to be in our town where we have hundreds of, you know, fifty to seventy-five to a hundred thousand vehicles a day. So we feel that we're very competitive, so we wanna be out there presenting ourselves. We did meet with them, they liked Indian Trail and there is a possibility that one day they will maybe reach out to us and say, you are the best candidate and we'll start communicating with them again. So where we are right now is we're awaiting Mr. Todd Johnson to get some more info from Raleigh. When we get that information, if we feel that it's the information that we need to allow us to meet again with this organization, I'm talking about funding, if the support is there, put us in a position to go back and learn more about the projects and learn more about their business plan, we will do so. But when we receive the info from Raleigh and Senator Johnson, we will share it with council. I also kept our attorney Karen informed. So as soon as we hear some, get some feedback from Raleigh, again, we'll make council aware and we'll see if we can have that second meeting with this organization to see if we could take it further. Karen, any comments in regard to? And I'm sorry, I failed to mention that the mayor has reached out to Senator Johnson and Mr. McIntyre has taken the lead on this. So as soon as we get any info, Mr. McIntyre, I'll keep you posted, Mr. Evans will keep you posted and we'll get some direction from you guys. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
There's no discussion items. Patrick, you have any other manager's report tonight?
No, sir.
No, sir? That brings us to council comments. Karen?
You guys were fast today, sorry, I'm not shuffled. Mr. McIntyre?
I'll make mine short. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Town staff, sheriff's department, appreciate all that you guys do. It does help our town when we have people who take the job really serious and do make a difference in the lives of the residents. Council, it's been approximately one year since I've been sitting up here. It's gonna be one year in a couple days. And Mr. Morse, I'm gonna address you specifically. And the reason I'm addressing you specifically is because I remember I saw a photo in the paper last week, I think, and you were standing next to me and the mayor was as well, but I'm addressing you because you made the motion and that you recommended me to sit up here with you, all of you, the mayor and the council. So I wanna thank you for putting your trust in me. I do remain humbled by that appointment and I am thankful to serve the community and the citizens of this lovely town. Again, town staff, I really appreciate all the work that you do. One thing I wanna just mention is every decision I make here, and I'm just speaking for myself, but every decision I make here, I take time and I put the interests of the town and the residents first. I value the opinion of everyone who comes up here to speak, even if they may present an alternative viewpoint or something that I may not necessarily agree with, it may either help to strengthen my position or allow me to reconsider my position. So as we move forward into the rest of, you know, the year, I will continue to operate just as I have and make decisions in the best interest of our town and its citizens. So hopefully, everybody will have a safe drive home and thank you for watching online and also coming to Town Hall.
Ms. Howe?
Okay, I'm gonna say I'll be short, but I'm not Chase either. I'm sorry about the miracle, I really am, because I'm thinking of the children who, it's just sad. I think that's the best way to put it. These are children with needs and this would've been a special place for them, but that doesn't mean it's gone now. The Rushing family pulled out, they had offered, was it twenty-five thousand?
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand. And that's really enough to get it started right now, but we can't make up for what they promised and then decided to back out. They had their reasons, I don't know why, but I guess it's none of my business at this point anymore. Maybe we'll find some grand person in this town that will come up with the funds and we can start something for the children. We'll just have to wait and see. Thank you, staff, for all you do. You hear this all the time and I say, please believe me, we couldn't do this without you. And Kathy, we look over there, but you're there and I wanted to acknowledge you too. I think that's it and again, it might be foggy tonight, so be careful driving home. Thank you.
Mr. Combs?
My sentiments reflect the same as my council members here. I thank you for coming. Marcus, I'd just like to say that I think you've done a wonderful job and I'm glad you're here. You know, you pretty much well said what you do and how you feel and I think you're a star and as long with the rest of the council, I think that's very well, but thank you, I'm glad you're here. I wanna pay a special or say a special thank you to Rocks. Rocks, thank you for coming out last week and doing that, you know, meeting for the It goes above and beyond your duty to do that and you presented a beautiful meeting and you make council look good. So thank you for your hard work, appreciate you. And I know Todd was here for another meeting and Adam and all of you are here, Mike's always here, but appreciate all of you. Gary was here and...
Jim, back there, Jim and...
Oh, Jim, Jim's always here. I'm sorry, Jim, I'm here so much, I didn't even see you, you're there all the time. Now, you do a wonderful job and Kathy, thank you for all you do too. Chase, thank you for all you do.
Oh, and Heather Winstone.
Oh, no, thank you guys, you're the best, there's no doubt about it. You guys are the best and we're very fortunate to have you. And again, thanks, everybody for coming and I hope you don't catch any kind of a cold or flu virus. It's tough, man, so stay away from these sick people.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Mayor Alvarez?
Well, I guess I'll ditto everybody's comments on town staff and sheriff's office. Welcome to our new deputy. Thanks for being here. Yes, Senator Johnson had given me a call and I just wanted to paraphrase what he was saying. He was invited here to Town Hall to speak with Patrick and he said he had a great experience. Patrick is well above par with his professionalism and his knowledge and his decorum and he would not hesitate to come back at any time when invited by Patrick. Thank you, Patrick, for representing our town as you do. Marcus, your professionalism and diplomacy raised the bar for all of us. Thank you for being part.
Thank you.
And other than that, everyone, have a safe night and God bless.
Mr. Morse?
Well, thank you. It was good to see some familiar faces back in the crowd tonight. There's too many of you to mention this time, I'm gonna keep it brief. I like the direction that the current council is taking. We are decreasing debt, we're working hard on the infrastructure, trying to keep the taxes low, these are important things to me. And we've got some exciting things in the works and we're hopeful that we'll continue to grow Indian Trail in the right way and that when y'all look back in a year or two, you'll be happy with hopefully some successes. Thanks, everyone, for coming out and listening tonight.
And Mr. Head?
Just wanna, again, comment on Lorraine and thank you for all that you've done. Mr. Kimball, I'm really fascinated with what he's maybe bringing and especially to Art. I think I said it last time, I've known Art, he and I took Planning Board orientation together in front of Rocks and so the length of time I was on the Planning Board, Art was there and appreciate his service and may he rest in peace. The staff, you know, we say it all the time, but staff continues to shine and we thank you for that, you make us look good. I was really impressed with the number of people here. Hopefully, this audience continues to grow and support us and everybody drive home safe. Thank you.
Mr. Combs? One other thing to add, I apologize, is I wanna recognize one person in the audience tonight, he's a personal friend of mine, one of the finest young men that I've ever met and I'm tickled to death you're here tonight, is Travis. Travis, ever quick, Travis, would you raise your hand or stand up? This guy is... This guy is everything that you'd ever want to be in a young man, and I'm glad you're here. Thank you for coming tonight.
Awesome.
Thank you, David. At this time, we have a closed session. NCGS 1433181183, to protect attorney-client privilege, I need a motion to go to closed session.
Still moved.
Mr. Morse made the motion. All in favor? That would be unanimous. Let's take a three-minute break, and I will meet everyone in the back.